We'll give them a quick update on Greenlight.
All the North Plains Planning Commission Special Session Meeting for October the twenty-third, six o'clock to order. Could I, or actually let's. Which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all. Just a clarification for everyone. The six eight is file P A twenty-four dash zero twenty-one. Code amendment is under new business that is now going to be six public hearing. And then the reappointment to the planning commission will be number seven. New business and then the numbers will change consecutively throughout through the rest of the agenda. So with that, could I please get the roll call?
Certainly. Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair LaVontae. Commissioner Canoto. Commissioner House.
Here.
Commissioner Para.
Here.
Commissioner Van Dahlin.
Here.
And I have not heard from Commissioner Miller and your ex officio this evening is Mayor Linehan. Present, thank you.
Believe that Commissioner Miller sent an email out earlier saying that he probably thought he was going to be out of town for this.
We've been buried, yeah, so he might have enough.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I'll mark it as excuse either way.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Item four is other comments this time is available for anyone on Zoom. If there is anyone.
Nobody on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, we'll just pass on that. Item number five is approval of the minutes for September eleven. Are there any corrections? Questions, comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Do we need a correction on the back comments for the certificates? Or I guess they were. Never mind, I guess certificates they just don't work like we expected. And did it approve the regular session minutes for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four? As written?
Second. Who was that? Commissioner House? It's been moved by Commissioner Lavontae, seconded by Commissioner House for approval of the September eleven regular session minutes. Is there any discussion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes opposed, aye. All right, minutes are approved as presented. Okay, so now item number six is public hearing. This is a quasi judicial in which we will be making a recommendation to the city council. So if I could please get the public hearing process.
Thank you. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing on file T A twenty-four dash zero two eight, City of North Plains I P U zone sign code amendment. The order of business will be as follows. The commission chair will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias. The commission chair will request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed land use amendment, first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided for an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The commission chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The commission chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific date and time. If the commission chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the planning commission. The decision will then be entered into a final findings of fact order, which will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties to the proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the city recorder within fifteen days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed amendment. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court due to condition of approval.
Thank you. Now, this is a procedure for legislative or?
Yes, it's legislative.
I was always understanding that conflict of interest and ex parte did not apply to legislative hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wondered why the language was in there. In the procedure.
That's, yeah, and that's what he said at the beginning.
It's a legislative hearing, but before, in terms of being able by testimony, that was accurate.
Okay, because I had the other script too, if you wanted.
No, I mean, they cover everything we need other than it should have caught off guard about that.
Yeah, some extra in there.
I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Yeah, you're correct.
All right, thank you. All right. With that, we will open the public hearing at six oh seven for file T A twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight I P U sign code amendment. Could I please get the staff report and recommendations?
Yes, good evening commissioners. This is text amendment twenty-four dash oh two eight for the I P U sign code. The proposed amendment is relatively minor, concerns the definitions in the I P U section of the sign code. And purpose here is to establish an independent definition for freestanding signs to permit monument signs in the I P U zone, increase the permitted sign height and area for the I P U zone, and replace the current setback standard of ten feet with a clear vision standard. This topic, the I P U sign code and its apparent deficiencies was brought to our attention when a sign contractor submitted this sign for the North Plains Bollard Works facility. Upon consulting the current sign code, it was determined that the sign was ineligible to be permitted under the current code due to the sign type being ground mounted or monument sign and its size. And this was something that had been, to my understanding, previously discussed. That there may be changes to the I P U sign code and that did not happen with the overall sign code amendment earlier in the year. And so there was some miscommunication and we decided to consider the I P U zone as a whole because there was, there are plenty of signs in I P U zones in North Plains and plenty of them also are not compliant with the current code. Have an example here. At Altvality Elementary School, there is a beautiful ground mounted monument sign that would not currently meet our regulations on two grounds, being a ground mounted sign as well as the setback, it's setback less than ten feet from the property line. It's about five feet from their property line, but well off the street and certainly isn't posing any obstructions. Another example, this sign for North Plains Christian Church is oversized and once again is set back less than ten feet from the property line, but is well off the street and isn't causing any sightline obstructions. These are just a few examples of signs that are noncompliant, but wholly appropriate for their uses and we felt that the current sign code was not inclusive of the expected signs for the uses of the I P U zone. And this is not, not a large area in the city that is affected, but is a significant area. It's thirty-one currently developed or available parcels. Not included in that thirty-one is small parcels such as water quality facilities or parcels owned by HOAs for open space. But in those thirty-one, our schools, city facilities, religious institutions, all important cornerstones of our community that often like to advertise with significant signs to make sure everybody knows where they are. That said, here's the proposed language for the amendment. It pulls out freestanding sign from being part of the poll sign definition and defines it as one with two or more uprights having a sign in between. These are really common in parts institutional facilities generally, sometimes city facilities or schools. And then makes a small adjustment to the poll sign definition and really just clarifying that is a poll sign is only with one upright. Hence poll sign. Then the actual text for the institutional and public use zone. And this modifies to include a monument sign or freestanding sign not to exceed forty square feet of area and a maximum height of eight feet. This is the standard for industrial zones. And this was chosen because of the similarity in scale between a lot of our institutional public uses and the industrial zones. These uses are often set back in similar ways, they're large in mass, and they're frequently visited, so it felt like an appropriate standard to use. Then we struck out the ten foot setback and added in the clear vision requirement. Our clear vision triangle is drawn at the apex of a corner of a street corner, twenty feet in for each leg. And that provides drivers enough sightline to safely navigate our streets without, in many cases, creating a setback. It's impractical for a sign, especially for an institutional use, which might have a larger driveway or already have a significant setback and needs better advertising. And that is the basis of this amendment, really, we're just cleaning up something that doesn't quite fit our current needs. And you'll be making a recommendation to city council with this legislative amendment. I'll provide you some sample motions and I'm available for questions at this time.
I do have one question on the poll sign.
Yes.
It says that the sign area calculation of such a sign shall include the entire structure.
Okay, so the sign area. Yeah, that is something that I may have to defer to Steve or the planning commission on. I was not involved in whenever this was established for the sign area calculation.
We can certainly amend that if you would like, that that's the way the definition came out of the previous amendment. But if there is a tweak that you would like to make, this is the time to do it.
Well, I'm just thinking that when we're talking about signs, basically, we should be talking about sign face area and not the especially of a poll sign or a freestanding. Because calculating the post is a little more difficult, number one, but I don't see why they should be added to the face. Right. Calculation.
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about. Again, you know, this is, this is where we landed in the last one. It could be cleaned up now at this time, if you have a suggestion that we could share with council as part of your recommendation, we can, we can move that forward. So maybe it would just be striking that last sentence out or indicating that the sign area is just the the area where the advertisement is located and not the support structure.
I know we don't have it here, it's monument sign, is that in also include the base or area or not?
Based on our measurement criteria. Right back here. For sign area, it does, we do have a definition, we do have some great pictures. It does not include the base for a monument sign.
Yeah, well, then it's ridiculous, include the poll and sort of poll something. I think we should strike that.
Yeah, you know, in this situation where we have a definition and then we have this language here, you know, we would defer to the more restrictive, which would be the definition that you're looking at right now. Compared to how the measurement is calculated in the definitions. And so I agree with you Chair King, that would probably be a good idea to align this definition with the, the way it's being measured, so there's no confusion there.
So we needing to make that part of our recommendation or is can we just modify that and be?
It'll be part of your recommendation.
To remove that sentence? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, we could remove the entire sentence or we could add a sentence, we could take that one out and add a sentence that says sign area measured per, you know, the definition for, or just leave it as it is and just let the definition, you know, rule by itself.
So to clarify, Chair King, you would want to remove from the sign area calculation all the way through defined as a ground mounted sign?
No. Just through the entire structure.
Through, okay, so just that sentence, we will leave in, this essentially allows the greater height of the sign, the other ways be defined as ground mounted.
Well, when, when you, when you include that, then it should say does not include the polls portion of the sign. Because that's how you get the added height.
Right, I, I think in this case, it would be best to take out both sentences.
Commissioner Van Dahlin, any question?
No.
Commissioner House?
No.
Commissioners found about?
No.
Lavontae?
The only thing I have is questioning of the height being eight feet. The maximum height.
Maximum height of eight feet, yes.
Yeah, and the only reason I say that is because, you know, most of the churches are in residential areas and so you'd be in a residential area with possibly an eight foot sign.
So it will, it will be eight foot at the top. And it up from currently six feet. And that's consistent with the typical scale of the buildings that we see in our institutional and public use buildings, that's what was used. If you have concerns about that, I would encourage you to discuss it.
This sign here is, is close to those dimensions. With the, with the top of the cross.
Top, it's, it's over six.
That sign we just put in about, I don't know, five or six years ago, how did it get? How did it get a permanent?
Changed the sign code like twenty times.
I was just trying to share something with you so you could see the scale of what, you know, an eight foot sign would look like.
And Commissioner Lavontae?
Yeah.
Commissioner Parry?
No.
Okay. With that, I guess we have no one on Zoom?
No, what we do, we have one person on Zoom.
Is there anyone wishing to testify? But the record show no one's in the audience, no hands raised?
No hands.
No hands.
All right. The record show there's no, no other testimony? With that, is there any discussion before I question to the staff before I close the public hearing? Hearing done? Public hearing at six twenty? Any deliberation? Question for motion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve file number two oh twenty-four dash zero two eight I P U sign code amendment with the amendments made this evening. Or excuse me, it's recommended.
Recommend, that's correct.
Starting. Who's that? Commissioner Van Dahlin? So it's moved by Commissioner Lavontae, seconded by Commissioner Van Dahlin for recommendation to city council approval. With the striking of the full sign language, the sign area calculation of such a sign shall include the entire structure, this essentially allow for a greater height of this, of this sign that would otherwise be defined as a ground mounted sign. That is to be struck in our recommendation, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say aye. Hearing done? Motion through. Great, we'll move on to item number seven. New business, Bonita and Dell application for reappointment to the planning commission. You have a application in your package? He's one that's legible. You know what happened with that?
It doesn't like whatever you put in there.
So with that is do we need the interview or recommending approval? I'll let the commission decide. No discussion. Okay. It's been. So let's see, we just need.
You can, you can do it as a regular vote, you can do it as a consensus, whichever you're more comfortable with.
Commissioner Parry? Recommendation? Commissioner Lavontae, yes, the Commissioner House? Commissioner Van Dahlin?
Yes.
And I also, yes, so the unanimous can for recommending Commissioner Kana Dell for reappointment to the planning commission. Okay, that takes us on to item number eight now of the land use applications and the city project monthly reports. Mr. Miller, will you have any reports and also give us an update on, I sent you an email about the joint work session that the planning
Yes, you, you sent me an email about a question we ran up the flagpole with the city attorney regarding the two acre property there in Bryn Hill and how the the master plan approval and the development agreements apply to the development of that property. And everybody agreed that they do apply. And so we have received an application from Greenlight. And that was submitted on the tenth of September, I believe it was. I deemed it incomplete on the third of October. They have since submitted the missing information. We deemed their application complete today. We will be mailing out public notice tomorrow as well as going into the newspaper with that advertisement tomorrow as well, all for a November thirteenth city planning commission hearing. And so their project does include a small component of mixed use. One of the things I'll be doing next week is sending you folks the entire application packet, so you have time to review it. Prior to the staff report coming out, the project consists of five three story buildings for fifty-nine apartment units and then a standalone building for the mixed use component as well as a leasing office for the overall building. And that is essentially their proposal. They have parking for all the units and the mixed use that they're proposing. They have some open space, they've got some play equipment. Not much, not a whole lot different than what you saw before in terms of the location of the buildings, they have them lined around Main Street and down on north for the apartment buildings and then they have the separate standalone building for the mixed use component at the north end of the property. I mean, excuse me, that would be that would be the north end, yep. No, wait, is that the west?
That's more.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, got to get oriented there at the north end. And so that's what we have right now before us. I think one of the things that's challenging for this particular application is an N C zone. For this particular property, there's no standard to go off of in terms of a minimum threshold for the amount of square footage someone is supposed to provide for the mixed use component, it's just that it provides mixed use. And so it would have been helpful if the code had some more clarity on that to provide some guidance, but we, we don't have that benefit. So we're just going to review it, you know, per the current code.
So if the development agreement applies and everything that we agreements with the owner builder, how do we go from forty-eight units to fifty-nine units?
Yes, that is per state law, the state law that they're operating under does allow them to increase the density by up to a hundred and twenty-five percent of what's allowed and that is how they've got to the higher number and that will all be addressed in the staff report for you, so you are familiar with the rules that are applying from the state level and how they apply to this particular project to increase the density for that property.
Chair King, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the hundred and twenty-five percent increase allowable under S B eight?
I believe it is. It is, it is S B eight, yes. And, and that has another O R S number, I can't remember off the top of my head, it was one forty-four or something, but that is it, that's correct. And again, we'll be putting all that information out to everybody. We've done it once before, but I'm sure you will like to get it updated, just in case you have it buried in your emails somewhere. But yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So you're, we're dealing with two state laws, one is the affordable housing rule and one is the needed housing rule. And so the needed housing rule says that, you know, any project that's qualified as needed housing and, and the governor has come out and said that that all housing is needed housing regardless of what it is. Requires clear and objective criteria only as, as the review criteria. So there are criteria that are in the design review chapter that are not clear and objective and we will explain that in the staff report, why those are not applicable to the project and it is because they are not clear and objective, they're, they're subjective criteria. And then we also are dealing with that other rule that has to do with being able to put these type of projects in the land that would typically have commercial development and being able to get an increase in the density.
Any questions of the planning commissioners on that?
I have a question, was traffic study forbidden?
There is a traffic study as part of the application. And so that traffic study kind of piggybacks on the And so that traffic study kind of piggybacks on the traffic study that was already done by Lennar for the project. Um, so it's just kind of taking what was already done and elaborating on that, how the project can still meet the standard via by going from forty-eight units to six, to fifty-nine units.
And then, does that traffic study take into account the new traffic? Or is that?
Well, the traffic study that Lennar did took into consideration the traffic of the whole project.
Well, yeah, sort of.
So they're addressing the threshold between what that traffic study did and the additional units that were not addressed as part of that traffic study.
It seems like we should require a new traffic study. Because the traffic is more than what the original study said.
Uh, the original study was accepted.
But how old is
It was accepted for that subdivision, but not for this use.
The original traffic study addressed not only all the, uh, single family and attached housing that would be there, but it addressed the use of that property as well, the two acre property. So it addressed the entire subdivision, um, in the original transportation study for that project. Um, so now they went back and looked at what was approved in the previous project. And they went and did the traffic study to address the additional traffic that they're proposing does above and beyond what the traffic study before had addressed.
How many units did the original traffic, uh, study have?
Yes, they modified them.
I'm trying to
Like, how many units were proposed in the original traffic study? Because the, the, I think the density on that was, if I'm not mistaken, was from twenty-four to forty-eight.
Correct.
So did they do it at forty-eight?
They, they did above forty-eight.
Traffic I'm talking about the original, the original.
The original addressed the twenty, the, the whole project, all
Right, but that's irrelevant, I'm talking, did they, did they address forty-eight units for the traffic study or did they adjust, uh, figure twenty-four units?
They addressed twenty-four to forty, they addressed the range.
Well, then they have to address the forty-eight. They can't do a range, they have to do a maximum number. And that's what, the question is, did they do forty-eight?
That's what I'm just trying to share with you, Chair King, is when they did the traffic study, they addressed it for both scenarios.
Twenty-four or forty-eight?
Correct.
Original, alright, that's what I needed, then, that per forty-eight, so.
So they addressed it for the development of the entirety of the Bryn Hill project. And the, and the worst case scenarios for the two acre property was part of that evaluation.
Alright, thank you.
I think originally it was part of the evaluation, but I thought they modified the plan and added more units to it overall, but didn't refine the traffic study, so shouldn't shouldn't we look at the overall plan and see how many final units ended up in the development as well as the increased, um, units?
I believe it's five hundred and five units overall in the project, not including the, um, this, not including this property.
That's what the original traffic study was for?
But again, they did it for all five hundred and five units as well as the two acre mixed use property. So they addressed the entirety of the project, that was the requirement at that time that the traffic study took into consideration all the development that it could occur out there. That's how the traffic studies are supposed to work, to look at the development as a whole. And, and look at the worst case scenario for what that project could generate. Um, that's what the studies had, had done. And so these folks came in, reviewed that study and then made their study to continue on with the findings that were made from that study to say how this project continues to fit in based upon adding an additional, um, forty-eight to, to fifty-nine, another eleven units. Um, and, and so that's what they're addressing in their traffic study.
Any other questions?
All the way to here.
Yes?
Um, so I hear you. And, and I remember what they are remembering, that the traffic study was issued. And the traffic study was done at various times of the day when they did not take into account that the school was in session, right? And I remember that we had that conversation and that there was some pushback about that traffic study with this particular development agreement. Uh, I was a part of those conversations, right? And so I, I hear you saying, you know, yes, what's in the record is twenty-four to forty-eight, right? But they're also proposing, uh, 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 there's a, there's a change in the amount, right? How difficult would it be for them to take the extra step to just do another traffic study? Based on what is existing today and what's being proposed for the future, things change.
You could certainly make that, they could certainly
And if we want, let me finish, if, if, if we want to, uh, have, um, full understanding of this project, I think, um, taking that extra step to maybe do it another traffic study might be worthwhile for this body and for council to consider.
It could certainly be requested. Again, we're operating within the limitations of our code that's hit at where the traffic study is required. You have to get to certain thresholds, uh, to hit the trigger to require a traffic study. Um, and so we are working with some limitations there in terms of what is required and when it is required. Um, we can talk about that during the hearing. Um, you can make the request that, you know, you would like them to go out and do an additional traffic study. Um, they're very time consuming and very costly. Um, you may receive some pushback on that because they may argue that the project doesn't hit some of those threshold numbers. Um, so that could be a discussion that you may end up having with them on that. But I imagine that they will try to, um, respond to that type of request based upon how the code is written. I'm sure the attorney will try to address it that way.
So again, just one more comment and then I, I don't want to, you know, belabor this. Um, the ride connection is looking at putting, um, having a stop along North Avenue. Was that considered in the traffic study years ago? I don't think it was, so I think that's something that should also be part of this conversation. Because if ride connection is saying, hey, we want to now have a stop on North Avenue to help support this community and it was not a part of the original traffic study, then I would almost have to, uh, inquire as to how can we make that a part of this traffic study, just so that we can understand and see the, the whole picture. Do you hear what I'm saying?
I mean, if ride study had, if they're committed to something and we know it's coming, um, they would be able to address that. If it's hypothetical, I'm sure they would push back on that saying it may or may not happen, so why are we having to address something that, that's not going to happen? Um, and, and again, I'm just kind of playing out like kind of the scenario, right? Because they're going to sit there and rely heavily on the code, right? And where those thresholds come and where they actually have to spend those dollars and go and do something. Um, and so they're gonna hold our feet to the fire that way, right? Um, we can certainly make requests, we can certainly go out there and ask them to do these things. Um, it'll be at their discretion if it's outside of what we're allowed to request. If it goes beyond the extent of the code, um, we really are at their mercy to want to participate with us to do that work. Um, because I, we wouldn't have a leg to stand on to require it. Um, and so that, that's kind of how that, that scenario would play out.
Um, based on this information, and if this comes to council, I will push back on that.
And that's
Based on what I know, and I don't want to have to come back to council, like have them come to council when this topic's already been brought up and, and, and requested to be addressed because and please, any plan commissioners, if you recall having an additional stop along North Avenue or public transit or ride connection, um, please let me know because I've been in rural transportation committees where when I look at a map and they show us a map, they're showing a stop on North Avenue for a potential site for a ride connection. And if we're looking at proposing fifty-two units of affordable housing, there might be folks who and children going to high school because they're also looking at that option. But they're living there and they won't be, you know, they might be able to utilize that form of transportation. So I, I mean, I would just hate to like have them not look at that and address that even before this gets to a a stage where we're making a decision on it.
I will bring all this to their attention, um, tomorrow. Um, so they can talk about it with their traffic engineer to see if they can provide an additional, um, memo uh, between now and the hearing to try and address some of those concerns. Um, and, and that, you know, again, um, I can request anything within the limitations of the code. And I can, I can totally require all of that. Um, once, once we get outside of that, if that happens, um, it will certainly be at their discretion.
Just a note on the stop on North Avenue as part of our phase two IGA with Washington County. That stop has been added and is currently active, it's just not currently signed.
Okay, that's good to know. So yeah, we will, we will certainly bring all that to their attention and ask them to address it. Um, so there's no, um, I, I don't want them coming into that hearing not ready for that. Um, we want to make sure they are prepared and, and ready, so these are great questions. Um, I think the only thing I'm trying to do with my response is to make sure we understand where we can require things and where we may have to rely on them to want to do something for us.
Well, and I want, I want planning commissioners to understand this conversation because this conversation has been had in other spaces. And if this is a conversation that's happening over here and you all get it and you have to like make a recommendation and then it comes to the council and, and the council's privy to a different set of information, like then we have a conflict. And I'm just trying to avoid the conflict.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
And that's all I'm trying to do is just make sure that you have this, this on the table and, and the planning commissioners have it on the table so that they understand that there are these things going on, especially with, uh, a potential right connection site. And I don't think that was factored into the original, uh, traffic study.
Sure, sure. So, you know, things that are on the books, things that are there.
Plus, there's been more development on North Avenue since Bryn Hill's original plan.
Yeah, three hundred and twenty-fifth was, uh, after the traffic study too, so. All that cost was a long time, so you, you at the end of Wosco as well, so. There's been more activity around that, I would think requires
And I, I know, being part of that meeting they had on Zoom, the community really wants to see a thorough traffic study. I mean, that's, they, they hammered that one down.
Again, in terms of what we can require, it will be at the, uh, limitations of the code. Um, that's, that's the extent of what we can require. Um, going beyond that, um, it's not uncommon for jurisdictions to request developers to, to go further um, and ask them to do that. Um, many times they don't have a problem with that. Um, and so that, that could be the case here. Um, but again, we'll, we'll certainly bring all this to their attention. Um, but these are, you know, are concern. Um, you know, in this particular type of application, um, the planning commission will not be making a recommendation. They'll actually be making a decision, uh, on this. And so, you know, any, um, chance of getting before, um, the city council would be because they decide to appeal. Um, the city council, I mean, the planning commission, so I just want to make sure everybody understands the process on how it gets to different levels. Um, and so, uh, I do appreciate the comments. Um, again, I'll share that back with them. I'm sure they'll have their transportation, uh, uh, traffic engineer here. This is, if they know that there's going to be transportation, uh, questions, they generally do bring their transportation engineer here to answer those questions. So I, I'm anticipating that would happen.
They want to get it right. And I think that would be our message, just like if you want to get it right, you have to hear what this body is saying. And also understand that there's concern and additional, uh, additional things that have changed over time since the original, um, development agreement, uh, uh, traffic study. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a legitimate, I think it's just, it's a valid concern of this group.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Chair King.
Uh, just one other question in, uh, are they requesting any off-street parking? I mean, any on-street? You're part of their requirement, parking?
They do provide a significant amount of off-street parking, there is the ability to rely on some on-street parking.
That's what I'm saying, are they requiring some of their requirement is, is it on-street?
At this time, Chair, I have not had the time to go into that level of review of their application to determine their, um, how they calculated their parking, um, but I do believe they have enough parking on-site from what I've seen.
That's, that was all I needed to know, thank you. Alright, no other comments on that? Uh, move, do you have any other staff comment?
Um,
Wait, excuse me, uh, that was in, let me move on to
Yep, yep.
Um, the planning, uh, item nine is planning commission comments. Uh, Commissioner Howe, do you have any update for us on the relook?
No.
Okay.
I watched the, the whole meeting, but I did not attend because when I received an email, it was not from, I expected it from Steve or Lori. And I didn't expect it from the finance guy, so I went right by it.
Okay.
I apologize for that, I'll meet up in there.
Just checking and, and I don't know, Mr. Miller, did you have any comments on that?
Um, no, I was just gonna, um, see if, uh, you know, Commissioner Howe was still available to attend those meetings since you were not at the first one and, and so thank you for that, uh, letting us know why there was confusion there. Um, you, you will probably be seeing emails come from that same email address, you know, in the future, so.
I already have the dates, though.
Yeah.
Also, I've, uh, requested Lori to add myself and, uh, Commissioner Levante because then we will make sure that the PC has some representative there. If somebody else can't make it.
Absolutely, I saw that, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Always good to have backup.
So any other planning commission comments?
About?
About anything you want to comment on?
I
Okay.
Three thirteen, three thirteenth and north, a year ago, we talked about crosswalk. And there is none on, on north that hasn't happened, I don't know why, but that's, that's pretty much Main Street kids going across and there, there's access to cross both sides, but there's no crosswalks on North Avenue. But I think there should be.
Um, maybe you can help me understand a little bit about that conversation, um. Are you saying that that was part of the conversation for the Bryn Hill development, that they were pre-providing that as part of their, one of their phases? And, and did that?
Well, when Andy was here, we talked to Andy about it too because it's, it's a major intersection.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not saying you have to put a line up at Plazas or anything, but there should be crosswalks on a main intersection coming out of that development, it's just, you can cross north to south.
No, you're, you're right, we have received actually, um, comments from people living in Bryn Hill, um, about making that a four-way stop. Um, that's not something we're considering, but, um, I agree that crosswalks, uh, would be a good safety function there. And, and so let me, um, kind of look into that a little bit more, I don't have all the background. So, um, let me kind of check with some of the folks that have been here a little bit longer and, and go through some of the decisions, uh, just so I can understand the conditions. Because it could be, it could be a, a phasing issue that it might, it might be coming with this final phase of construction. Uh, because a lot of the improvements along North were triggered at different time period, different time periods based on when the impacts came in with the, the housing development. So, um, I will look into that for you.
Yeah, I mean, looking at an area, like if, if the Bryn Hill side is proposing that it is set up for crossing because there's bulbouts with walkways going to the street. So that's intended to be cross, crossings, uh, or at least inviting people to cross. So I think that would be important to, to follow up on that.
Yeah, we will, I'll certainly follow up on it and, um, I'll probably end up sending an email out to everybody, uh, with an update, I guess. Because I, I should have an answer before your next meeting.
Thank you. If you have anything else, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Commissioner Levante?
Um, so I know we've all seen a lot of different things, uh, mentioned on social media in the last few months. But, um, with the YouTube starting up again, I just wanted to get a definite answer from city staff that, um, regarding the email from DLCD saying that the city did not have to expand or the city did not have to, is not obligated to update their housing, their comprehensive plan, the, um, economic analysis.
I, I, I think I heard almost two questions here, but I believe the question is that. The, the email from D L C D indicating that we do not have to update the housing need analysis is up the question. Well, I think there's two things there. One, one, they said we do not have to update the housing needs analysis, that we can rely on the one that was adopted. And two, because we are a city under ten thousand, we're not subject to periodic review. And because we're not subject to periodic review, we don't have the same obligation that those larger cities have of maintaining that twenty-year supply. However, because we did adopt the housing needs analysis, we do have an obligation to follow through with addressing that. That identified need. And so even though we're not obligated, because we did adopt the housing needs analysis. We now are obligated to do something with that. And so there's kind of two things there. We're, we're not required by state law to go through periodic review and maintain a twenty-year supply. However, because we did adopt the housing needs analysis, we are obligated now to address that.
So the obligation to address it then, does that become an immediate action or is that the eight years?
That would become as a, there, there's several ways to address that. We could go forward with the U G B expansion for housing or the. Ordinances that adopted the housing needs analysis could be rescinded and, and effectively taken off the table. And, and in that way, it would no longer be recognized.
Steve, may I interject here? I think your questions maybe should be answered by the, by the city attorneys.
Sure.
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, I thought it was a planning question. I'm sorry. I, just because I've heard it, I. I was, I just wanted something to say whether what was actually true.
I understand. I think this is a great question. I could go to Chris Cream. Should you be willing to forward those to Steve so that you can send them to Chris Cream?
Yeah, I'll, I, I got your questions. I'll, I'll send them, but that. So we're going to ask about the adopted H N A. I think that was one of your questions. And then the other question was just the, the need to do a U D B expansion. Is that your second question?
Yeah, I mean, the comment from D L C D is just a city with a population below ten thousand outside of Portland Metro is not required to update their comprehensive plan. Housing needs analysis and economic needs analysis on a regular schedule. Cities above population is just basically citing what the requirements are.
That, that's what it's getting at. That's, that's the periodic review. So prior to two thousand, all cities were required to do periodic review. On an approximate five to seven-year basis. However, because D L C D was understaffed. They had a challenge getting around to all the jurisdictions and so they made a decision to. Only have it for jurisdictions that are ten thousand and greater in population, so they could have a better time managing their workload. So that's, that's how that effectively played out.
That's why we have Bryn Hill and the other one out there, so.
So again.
That'd be great, because you know, the more information that we can provide that's actually accurate is, is better for all of us.
Oh, hundred percent, hundred percent. And, and so that, that's accurate, but we'll just follow it up with a, with a comment from the attorney. So you can hear his side of his story, but yes.
I don't want to hear his side of the story. I just want to hear what is required for our city.
That's what I'm saying. When I'm, when I say his side of the story, I mean, a legal opinion.
Okay, any other planning commission comments? Anything for city council?
Um, just to follow up on the RAC conversation. So the first community meeting is actually on Monday, it's five to eight. Details will be coming out as far as, I mean, I have the news here. But as far as, it's a community meeting, it's not an official RAC meeting, but it is a community meeting. So the community preferably, hopefully residents will come out for that. It's also my understanding that D L C D should be here. And Heather, if you attend, you can probably ask him those great questions in here directly from the horse's mouth. From D L C D, right? Because it's my understanding that they should be at these pub, at these community meetings. They were also at the first RAC meeting, D L C D was, right? So they are also, they should be the ones answering that question for you. So, and, and not just you, but everybody.
Well, that's, that, that specific quote was from Ethan at D L C D.
Ethan was as a, was as a, um, a junior person. Not a senior person. And when I put that, when I put that information in front of a senior executive director at D L C D. She was a little taken aback. Because he did not go through the, apparently there was a chain of command that should have been followed. And, and there was a process and procedure that wasn't followed.
So maybe that would be good news, you know, good information to be passed down that.
I don't want to speak on that. I would rather have D L C D speak on that. That's their, that's.
I'm just, I'm just saying, just in general, I.
Yeah.
Just to make it sure everybody's on the same page about everybody disagreeing, just.
I have a question. Why do you think people are so hung up on that?
I don't know, other than they just didn't want to grow to the size that was projected with the U G B expansion. I mean, I don't know.
I can answer that. Because there's so much disinformation. And I've said it before, that had, the city had more meetings. That the people got to invited to and understood what was really going on. I think that we may have not had the problem we had. Because all I hear about is all the things that are totally not happening and was not part of it. And I try to explain to the people and once I explain to them, then they understand. But there was no, there was some meetings that they could have come to, and I get that. They, everybody could have come, but they didn't. But whenever I've been involved with like South Hillborough, I went to all those meetings, I went to everyone, but I went to a lot of them. They had boards up, people asking questions, answering questions. Made people understand what was actually happening. There was none of that here. And so. Of course, rumor has it, right? You know, you go to the hairnet, bar net, whatever it is net. And you're going to have all these things that happen. And so I believe that that is exactly what happened. Because I don't know, I probably, forty people I've talked to. Had the idea that Intel's going to be out here in the field. And there's going to be big data centers all over town and you're going to be seeing them. I mean, everybody thinks that, so.
And who told them that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's rumors get started, just like this D L C D stuff, right? So it's like, if you can, if you have enough meetings that public is invited to, and if they don't come, then that's their problem. But I think if they, there was meetings, we would have not, not had this problem.
And, and, and the amount of meetings that we had is public and it's on the website. And I'm sure that Lori can certainly push that out there as well, but there's over, there were over twenty. I remember sitting in, for the last five years, and, and some of our meetings were at Senior Center.
I was on the.
And I remember even texting you, Heather, during a couple of our meetings. Where you were listening in on the conversations when D L C D and, and other folks were in the room. So there were, there were meetings.
That was one of the only few meetings I got to attend because I asked city staff if I could be on the email list. And I was told I couldn't because it wasn't city staff's scheduling the meetings. It was being done by the consultant. So I had a hard time following it. So I can't even imagine an individual citizen trying to figure out when those. Irregular scheduled meetings were being held, basically.
And, and, and I hear that and I think to myself too, like, I mean, how do you? How do you get people here? Like, how do you get people to your meeting? How do people know that you have a meeting tonight? Right?
I actually asked at one of our meetings, should we be doing social media outreach? Because we don't do anything for the planning commission meetings. What's being on it? What's on the agenda?
I, I, on our face, city Facebook page.
But not everybody has Facebook.
Well, we have Instagram, we have Facebook, we have the E Connect newsletter, we have the regular newsletter. They get posted in three places in town. Everything's on the city website. So, I mean, we're always looking for more ways to get the information out.
Our agenda, for instance, it, it's only on the city's website, correct?
It's, it's posted in the three places around town and. Up until this month, when we had a communications person, she would post on Facebook that the meeting was tonight and a link to the agenda. And this is not a, this is not an unusual thing. This happens across the state of Oregon. And when I go to my, like, I was just at the lead Oregon cities conference last week in Bend. And this is a topic that comes up with mayors and city councillors all the time. It's like, how do you get people to come to your meeting? And we do, we do everything that so many other cities are doing, like social media, in the newspaper. In the water bill, in all these different avenues. And it's just one of these things where it's like, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And so we're not, this is not an unusual thing for public meetings in the state of Oregon. It's not unusual. People will come out when there's a contentious topic or when they're P O'd. I E. the U G B expansion, right? That's when we get people in the audience. But when we're talking about sign code or police or public. Things like that, it's, it's crickets. The only reason why even the city council is starting to see an influx of people in our meetings is because of the U G B expansion. And some of the people that show up in the meetings are not residents. Many of them are not residents. They're people who live outside of this community. And so you scratch your head and go, all right, how can I get my neighbor here? How can I get a planning commissioner here? How can I get a Parks Board member here? How can I get? Well, I'm just saying, I'm just like, how can you get people to come that live in this city to come to your meetings? I mean, I have yet to heard the magic word, right? I wish I had a crystal ball. But two hundred forty-one cities across this state have the same, the same problem, same problem. So we're not unusual.
We're not unusual. You know, in my past position, working for Emilio, I've traveled to many different jurisdictions. And the only time you see people in those meetings is when it directly hits them, the proposal. So the subdivision is going right next to somebody, they show up. But if it was somewhere else, those people would show up, be another group of people that would show up. For this one, we noticed every I P U property owner of this proposal. I thought there would be people here for that reason, because it's the sign. It affects their property, you know, it affects what they do on their property. So to have nobody here, just a little surprising that people aren't here for this hearing. But I agree with the mayor that we do do a lot of outreach to let people know about our meetings and whatnot. We use as many channels available to us as that we have, but you, you can't make them drink the water. You can just let them know where it's at. And then we try to do that as, as best we can. I, I know it's a constant conversation at, at city hall on how we can continue to get the word out. Because again, the last thing you want is this scenario that we just ran into. Which is going to have all these meetings for all these years and bringing a proposal forward. And then you get hit at the eleventh hour with all these people saying, I never knew. You know, and you're thinking, well, how could you not know? We've been trying to let you know for a very long time. And so it's a really, it's a really challenging thing.
That was the big thing, is so many people didn't even know what a U G B expansion meant. It was born to them. It is, they, you know, they're in their little homes, doing their little, you know, daily lives, living their lives. And not realizing what a U G B means to the community. I mean, I think that's, that's what some of it was, you know.
I think most of it was people on their little farms going, you're not coming closer to me.
No, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. And.
Well, I, I think that the ice cream social was a huge event. And a lot of people there, if you push the word out a little bit more on what's happening in the community. To all of those people and try to get the word out and attend the party. And that's the only way you can, because they're all snug and bunk in their house right now and, you know, they're probably watching fantasy TV or something. I don't know.
And, and you know, Heather, I, I don't need to push back on that comment that you've made, but there are a lot of people in this town that have a nimbyism attitude. And when I listened to that first meeting from the Green Light and I listened to and I read that, some of the, the, the comments from people that in Bryn Hill. That moved here, that lived there, they're like, we, we weren't sold that. We don't want that here. One woman even said, and this is shocking to me. Are you going to make your own park for those people so that they can use that park and not use our parks?
So they didn't.
And, and Iggy, you're shaking your head because I know you were on that call.
Yeah, I was on that call. I stayed quiet.
And I was shocked. I was just like, oh my gosh, and I'm doorknobbing. And people are like, well, no, we don't want this view to go away. I lived, you know where I live, and I sat on that corner for sixteen years looking at sunsets before Bryn Hill came in. So I understand how those people, you know, about not having their view taken from them, right? Quotes, in quotes. But that, that sentiment is prevalent in certain areas of this community. Where people do not want to have their views taken away from them. And it's like, they moved here to get away from somewhere else, so they don't want to see. Anything beyond green space and, and grass fields. And Iggy, you're shaking your head. I, I mean, I know that you know what I'm talking about.
Park House in here from November.
Well, I mean, this is a shocking thing, you know, when you think about it, because you, you think about where the Bryn Hill development is located. It's located on Fran Farmland, right?
Yep.
And what did it do? I mean, it took away your views, right? And so I think there's a kind of a lack of appreciation, maybe a little bit for growth. You know, and how it occurs and how it, it, you know, it impacted people to the east of Bryn Hill right now. And yet, there's still, you know, their life is going on, they're, they're adjusting to the change.
I am too.
But it's, but it's, it, it's, I was shocked. Heather, I was, I mean. My mouth like hit the floor when I read those comments from folks in the Bryn Hill subdivision. And then how, what they were commenting on. I was. I was speechless. I was just speechless. I was just like.
There really seems to be a misunderstanding, maybe for the folks that live in Bryn Hill. Yes, you know, for example, I mean, to, to like the parks in Bryn Hill, for example. There's a real misunderstanding there that, you know, those parks, if you go look at every plat that was recorded for the, that project. All of the open spaces available to all this, it's got a public access overlay on it, so all the citizens can use it. That's not the understanding of what many people have in that subdivision. There's been a lot of misinformation shared on the type of amenities that will be going into those parks. So there's just, I don't know where all this misinformation gets started. But it's, it's surprising that nobody takes the time to contact myself to talk about it, you know. So we can kind of go through that process, go through the master plan with them, help them understand how it was approved, why it was approved that way, what the objectives were and whatnot. They're just kind of go from this position of almost wanting to be a little bit naive so they can say more. And, and kind of confuse the conversation a little bit more, because once they get the facts, you know, it, it almost hurts them a little bit sometimes.
You know how hard we worked on that Parks Minister, but.
I know, that's why I put the Parks Board, because they went and hired a consultant and changed everything we wanted on there.
And that was challenging, right? And, and, and they eventually hired somebody. And it was, it was a, a challenging thing. But I remember that I would say you and I and Doug spent redlining things and trying to make it right, make it inclusive, make it. Inviting the folks and the community. It was, it was a challenge, right? And, you know, I appreciate the work that we did, but, and I still have all those red finders.
We had to walk through Bryn Hill today and the parks are great. They look really good. I hope more people, I hope more people get out.
They're always being used.
Yeah.
But they should be inclusive. They need to be inclusive. If we talk about small town charm and community, then we need to have an inclusive conversation. And, and not feel like that we should shut people out. Because they live in an apartment over a building, right? I mean, I'm sorry, I, that's just.
Well, I'm still part of the Bryn Hill community, whether they, you know, the neighbors like it or not. There's still a lot in that development. So they have to abide by the C C N R's, just like all the residents do.
Sure.
And just so you know where that project is at, they, they did record phase five recently. And they are starting to submit building permits now for that last phase, which is the last phase they had to submit building permits for. There's about a hundred and five last year, is that right? A hundred lots left for building permits. Now, they got more lots to build than a hundred, because they haven't built everything out in phase four yet. But there's only a hundred permits left to obtain, to get all the permits for the housing in that, except for the two-acre parcel.
While we're talking about that, not that I want to continue this longer, but. While we're talking about that, not that I want to continue this longer, but how the hell did they get away with doing such a high retaining wall?
Where?
Have you ever driven up North Avenue from?
Oh, I see, yeah, over there, yeah.
It's a ten-foot wall.
That I would have to talk to Brian Feeny about. I I I did not do the engineering review on that. So let me, let me follow up with Brian on that.
Chair, thanks for letting me. Open the conversation.
All right, we're moving on to staff comments.
You know, we covered a lot of ground. I appreciate the mayor sharing with you about the RAC and the meetings. That's what I was going to have for you, but that really is what's what's happening right now at the city is. You know, the community meeting on the eighth, and then the next RAC meeting, number two, I believe is in early November, isn't it? Or there's something like that, I believe. But anyhow, we'll try, we'll keep you posted. But that's really it. You know, we talked about the Green Light development. That's coming your way, the RAC. Please attend if you can. I got several questions here to follow up on, so I'll talk to Brian Feeny about the engineered wall at the west end of phase five. And how that worked out. I'll follow up with Chris Cream on the H and A and the U G B kind of, you know, questions that you had. And then I'll also follow up on the crosswalk at three thirteenth and north. And I will send you guys an email sometime between now and before the next meeting with answers, and I will C C you, Mayor, so you also are in the loop there.
Thank you.
Ron, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Yeah, the the other big issue is FEMA. This is, the reason we canceled the joint work session on the eighteenth is because there. FEMA is continuing to change things, you know, as we are getting close to this deadline to have to choose what option we're going to choose. They're continuing to have workshops and other online webinars and whatnot. And as we've gone to these meetings and these webinars, we've learned that there's been slight tweaks along the way. So we didn't feel like we had the level of detail that we needed for a work session for you folks, and so that's why we canceled it. And now we're looking at a work session November eighteenth to go over everything. We think we'll be about as complete as we can by that time. With what FEMA is rolling out. So there there's not a lot to add to that right now, again, because there's so many moving parts. But we know that we're not going to go with option one, which is to deny any more development in the floodplain. So we're going to go with the model code, or we're going to go with a permit-by-permit option. And and then we're just trying to find out those details still, so we can, you know, provide you with the best information. So you you will probably be getting an email from me for a joint work session on November eighteenth. To replace the one that we canceled.
Any other staff comment?
That is it. Thank you.
Great. If there's no other commission business. Our next regular meeting is November the thirteenth at six o'clock, not seven o'clock. As indicated on the. So that really.